Hello.
Hello, hello, hello.
All right, Aaron's in.
Aaron's in.
Somebody with a Z.
Is that Jay, maybe?
Zoom administrator.
When?
Thank you. Everyone ready? Dr. Harrison, point of order, do we need a motion to open the public hearing? What's the procedure for that?
You can just call the meeting to order at this point.
Okay, so I.
The, the public hearing to order.
Okay, so I called me into order and we'll begin with the public hearing on the budget for the 2021 school year.
Very good, so just bear with me. So, good evening, everyone. This will be a brief overview of the proposed budget that the board has adopted at the recent meeting, and that is now currently before the voters of the Irvington Union Free School District. As always is the case, we start with our strong vision and look to always balance our focus on providing for the best possible experiences for our students with our fiscal responsibility. In doing so, we always have an eye on our strategic objectives and all the planning and the work that we do across the district. There is a consistent alignment with many of the six objectives before you. That said, it has been an atypical and arduous process. Due to the school closures and the pandemic, we have had to modify the budget calendar based upon the executive orders from the governor. We find ourselves in a position today where we are having the hearing. And just on May 19th, there was the budget adoption, which would have been the budget vote had it not been for the pandemic and the respective closures. And as we know, the vote by mail or absentee ballot system is ongoing at this time. That said, the school budget is broken into primary categories, business and operations, which, as you can see, encompasses many, many aspects of the district's business side of function. And then the curriculum instruction, really the public facing side of what we do and where our students are directly touched with the school budget. That said, every year, a budget has variances. That means look at increases that occur from one year to the next. That said, you can see the various areas where that does occur. This year, when we look at our push ahead budget, and that is before we step back and to consider anything new, we have to consider what those increases are. This year's budget increased, the variance, as you can see, is $1.4 million. However.
Excuse me, Chris? This is Michael Hannah. I'm sorry, it doesn't look like your slides are progressing on what we're seeing on Zoom. So, I'm not seeing it. I don't know if anybody else is having that.
Is that different?
Yeah, now I see it, yep.
All right, so my apologies. So, that said, just back up so you can see the budget timeline that I was referencing, followed by the business and operations category of the budget and curriculum and instruction. To the slide that I was just speaking to at this point in time and looking at the year to year push ahead budget variances, and to see where those increases come from, vast majority associated with salaries and benefits for our employees and other costs that are built into the operational necessities of our school district budget. That said, we find ourselves with a proposed budget of $64,556,500, which represents a 2.5% increase from the 1920 budget. When we look at the push ahead budget alone, you can see that that in itself was a 2.3% increase. So, there's very few additions that are embedded within the proposed budget. Here, we take a look at those being $184,000, which are critical investments in an additional social worker, which is certainly of great need in the district, as was discussed in prior Board of Education meetings. And also, as a result of the challenges that we are facing in our nation today, certainly there'll be needs there. Some additional shared services related to the security in and around our schools and a few advisor and coaching stipends for the total of $184,000. However, embedded within that budget is approximately 20% reduction in the state foundation aid that equates to about $370,000. That $370,000, it has been reduced within the budget because we anticipate reductions in state aid. The governor has already referenced a 20% reduction that we should expect, and we anticipate other further reductions that will occur throughout the course of the school year as the state hits the four different measurement periods that have been outlined. That said, through this budget process, we had included all these items initially in the original proposals. However, based upon the challenges that are present financially in the global community here, we've scaled them back to focus on the top items that I had referenced previously under the revised proposal. So, as we look to move forward, we recognize that we had to make changes. These are the reference changes that I had made before. The first was some health insurance savings that we realized because the district is the member of a health insurance consortium with another 22 school districts. We refer to a Swiss chip, of which I am the vice president. Swiss chip is functioning on a very healthy financial situation, and we move to provide some financial relief to our school districts by lowering rates, hence the $106,000 savings. And we are able to forego expenditures in other areas. And you can see the related notes to them. These are areas that we're able to forego at this point in time. And if finances and revenues increase, we could revisit these down the road. That said, the budget certainly aligns with all of our goals that I had outlined before, and truly is, it puts us in a place where we can sustain our finances for this year and sets the district up well for the 2122 school year. It invests and increase social emotional support for our students and security assistance across the entire district, maintains a solid investment in our instructional programs and student experiences. However, we have built in layers of flexibility to be able to navigate the challenges that could potentially face us if the state continues to reduce our state aid. I would invite you to refer back to the May 5th presentation and video for an outline of those specific measures, but we have outlined two different tiers of different, different steps the district could take to offset reductions in revenue, should they surface. So, when we look at the proposed budget, you can see an overview by the individual function areas that exist within the budget. The functions areas are kind of broad brushes that we can look at the massive categories of the budget to see where the increases exist, the change in value and the variance from year to year. Then, when we think of the budget summary by the broader categories, you can here again see the variances that occur, and then, of course, changes in percentage and dollar amount. Simply stated, this is, I think, a powerful visual for us all to consider when we think of school districts. We are a people business. You can see that nearly 73% of our budget is related to employees, whether salaries or benefits. Thus, there's very little room for other reductions in a budget without thinking of reducing staff and/or having impacts on student program. Each year, we think it's responsible to always share our tax cap formula to show that we are compliant with the state's 2% tax cap. And you can see how the cap plays out this year with all the various factors as it relates to the school district's finances and the financial indicators that are given to us by either Greenberg or the state of New York. On the revenue side of the budget, you can see where our monies come from. Certainly, the vast majority of our money, as you will see, are going to come from our local property taxes. State aid, you can see, we're already down nearly 11% with a significant impact there. We do see some drops in tuition because it just shifts in enrollment currently in our schools. But the major challenge that we see is a decrease in state aid revenue. Here, certainly when we look at affluent communities such as Irvington, we recognize that the weight of the school district budget sits on the shoulders of our local taxpayers here in Irvington, nearly 91% is the case. While that, I know, is a challenge and a difficult pill to swallow at times for our community members, when we look at challenges such as those that we're facing here today, the fact that we receive a small amount of outside aid and state and federal aid when there are cuts that we know are going to occur, we're relatively insulated from major, major sweeping cuts that other districts that receive more state aid may realize. This helps fuel our financial stability moving forward, which is also enriched, of course, by all the wise moves that the Board of Education and administration have taken over recent years to invest and focus upon the district's financial future. That said, here, you can take a look at what the tax rate will be in a simple formula where you could calculate an estimate, and I want to underline that as it is on the screen, that this is an estimate of what your taxes could look like with the proposed school district budget and some illustrations for some sample properties in the community. An overview of the trends that have occurred with the school district budget and looking at budget percent increases from year to year and tax rate increases, being mindful that in 1718, there was a shift in the valuation methodology because of the reassessment. So, we started anew in the comparisons in 2018, 19. That said, here we are, thinking where, what's happening in our community today. With the community voting on the budget, it is always, of course, the hope of a district, a Board of Education, that the budget will be approved by the voters. Traditionally, if a budget was to be defeated, the school district would have the opportunity to go forward with a second vote. That second vote, the board would determine whether they wanted to present the same budget that was originally presented to the voters or to present a modified budget. Based upon that process, if it failed the second time around, the district would have to move to a contingent budget. But I want to pause here because this is a very important point that we need to make, and everyone in the community needs to understand. In the executive orders that provided for this budget timeline, the vote timeline for all school districts in the state of New York, the governor provided for no provision for a second vote. Therefore, at this point in time, there is no mechanism for a school district to facilitate a second vote, which means, based upon the legal guidance and professional guidance that we have received thus far, that that second vote would not occur if the budget was not to pass in this current period of voting, absentee votes, that we would immediately go to what is referred to as a contingent budget. Here, we would have to cut our levy to no more than the previous year's levy. We would see a budget decrease of $524,000, but that would equate to over $2 million worth of reductions on our operating budget for the 2021 school year. That would mean that we would not be able to purchase any new equipment. We would not be able to permit community use of our buildings or facilities, and we could not have any, undergo any capital improvements unless it was an emergency situation. And even in those cases, we would have to receive special authorization. This would obviously have a detrimental impact to the experiences that our students have and the quality of education that we provide in our school district. In thinking about this, we want you to consider that a typical staff member, an entry level employee with benefits costs the district approximately $100,000. That said, when we take a look at this, think of $2.1 million equating to 21 positions across the district, and think of class size, think of electives and other opportunities that we would have to make difficult decisions in order just to simply balance a budget. So, it is critical that all of our voters come forward and participate in the election and certainly let their voice be heard in this current process. As I indicated, the budget vote is underway. All qualified registered voters received a ballot through the mail with a postage paid return envelope. If it is your first time voting by an absentee ballot, I would encourage you to follow the directions closely on the envelope. Also, I recorded a video that is posted on the district Facebook page that will walk you through that process. All ballots must be received by the school district by June 9th at 5:00 PM. That is not postmarked by June 9th. They must be physically in our possession in the school district on June 9th, 5:00 PM. So, if you are mailing them, I would encourage you to mail them soon. Mail them by Friday to ensure that we have them here on Tuesday. Additionally, on Monday and Tuesday, our district clerk, Pauline Davies, will be in the district office at Dow's Lane. We have installed a lockbox outside of the entrance to Dow's Lane on the flagpole or gymnasium side of the building where the district office is housed. As you come out the steps on your left hand side between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM on the 8th and 9th, the next Monday and Tuesday, you can drop your ballots, completed ballots, in that box. But please, I want to say it again, make sure you follow the instructions, make sure the ballot is completed, there's no stray marks on the ballot. Insert that ballot in to the oath envelope, as it's called, the one with all the writing on it. Complete the front side, sign the backside, seal it. Place that envelope in the postage paid returned envelope. Seal that envelope, place that in the mail or drop it off in person on the dates I referenced and it's displayed on the slide to ensure that your vote can be counted. That said, it is now certainly in the voters' hands, Mr. Friedman, and an opportunity for any public comment on the budget.
Excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So, for this meeting, we are going to try to use the comment function in Zoom. So, if anyone has a comment on the budget, they could do that now through the Zoom comment function. You can also always send us emails at the board email address, which is board@irvingtenschools.org, and you'll get a response to your questions that are posed via email as well. So, at this point in time, if anyone has a comment on the budget, they can do so in the comment feature. Not seeing any comments, we'll move on to the next meeting. But I will say that for our regular meeting as well, we will be using the comment feature. So, at the point in the meetings on the agenda where we have public comment, the public can use the comment feature to post them. So, you may want to have any comments that you want queued up for the appropriate time in the public comment period to post those. But also, you can always, as I just said, during the public comment period, send an email to the board at our email address afterwards and get a response as well.
Mr. Friedman, I don't know if I would note, there was one comment.
Yeah, I see some have come on.
So.
Just to clarify, on my Zoom, it comes up as Q and A. That's the function we're talking about.
Yes.
Yes.
So, there is one comment that has been, and Mr. Friedman, I will read it from Jasena, that, "Thank you for keeping early word language, foreign language is a key to breaking down barriers during times like these when systematic racism is scaring our democracy. We need to help our children learn from a young age to embrace diversity and inclusion, foreign learning. Language learning is an important way to show respect to other cultures. The younger you learn it, the more natural it comes to you, together with the understanding of other cultures." And that is the only comment, I believe, we have.
So, at this point, we will close the public hearing and return to our regular meeting. Actually, hold on, I see another comment just came in, the wire. It was just, yes, replying, so. So, we'll now move on to our regular meeting. At this point, if everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. Republic, the republic. For which the nation. Under God.
What everyone can't see is actually hanging above my computer is Jasper John's painting of the American flag. So, I actually have an American flag here for, here for this. So, with that, Dr. Harris, excuse me, if we can, if I get a motion to accept tonight's agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, that, Dr. Harrison, over to you for updates and news.
Yeah, so thank you. As I had referenced during the budget hearing, our primary focus at this point in time is to truly focus upon the budget and the preparation for the next steps that will follow and educate community members to the best of our ability on the budget. I certainly want to remind everybody that we have a wealth of resources on the budget page on the district website. I would encourage folks to check that out. Not only can you view the physical presentations, but you can watch the videos of each and every budget discussion that has occurred over recent months. There's a budget FAQ that is present. There is also the Big Budget Book, which is several hundred page detailed overview of the district's proposed budget that is prepared by Ms. Stein and her expert staff each and every year. There is a budget FAQ, and there is also an overview of the voting process. Should you need any clarity on that process, there's a document that I created there that outlines all that relevant information for you. And finally, there is sort of resource related to the district's fiscal responsibility and initiatives that it has undertaken in recent years for a window into the work that we've done to provide for a responsible budgets each year, management of facilities and capital projects, as well as our planning efforts for the future. So, I would encourage you all to take a look at that. I also would like to advise the, the community that, in one of my letters in, in the past week, I asked everyone to save the date of this Friday for a community parade, and I was excited for this event because, as of now, I had over 100 force staff members that signed up to participate. We have ongoing discussions with our local police departments, which include Irvington, Tarrytown, and Greenberg, that we may have to reschedule, and I hope not cancel, on the parade. Because of the concerning events that are happening nationally, all of our local police forces are to serve in a mutual aid capacity should any communities have concerns. So, there was, is a worry about putting any strain on our local police forces as they may have to respond to incidents that could occur in our own communities or those that surround us. So, the chief and I are having some ongoing communications, and I look to provide the community with an update on this by no later than Thursday. Tonight, the, the primary focus of our conversation is going to be in and around distance learning. Much of the update that I would like to give, I believe, will be embedded in that presentation. But I want to give assurances to the community, as will be reiterated later this evening, that we are going through a rigorous process that we're going to launch in the coming week to develop our reentry plan or reopening plan for the Irvington schools. And in doing so, we're going to take into great consideration feedback that we receive from the community, that which I assume we will receive tonight. There will be opportunities for community feedback by way of survey before the end of June, and that will go into our planning, not only to inform the prospect of additional distance learning for next year, but it will inform our reentry plan and supporting student needs if we were to be able to be able to return to onsite learning here in our school buildings. So, please know that we're dedicated to being well-prepared, having a well-thought-out plan for all different aspects of school operations and the delivery of teaching and learning, regardless of the format in which it may take.
Excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So, I think with that, we'll move on to our committee reports and start with the Buildings and Grounds Committee. So, I'll start with that, and as always, Carol will correct whatever I get wrong or fail to talk about. So, as everyone knows, the board has been continuing through the B and G Committee to work with the administration on developing our capital project construction plans. Fortunately, as we've reported at the prior meetings, given the New York pause, things have slowed at SED such that we'll have limited work, it appears, that can start this summer. But we are continuing to push ahead with the submissions to try to get everything up to SED as possible so we can keep things moving with the hope that we'll be able to do some work during the school year at either off hours or different times, depending on the nature of the work. At, at this point, the only project that I think we can say will definitely proceed over the summer at this point is the Dow's Lane boiler replacement, since that's one where we've already awarded the bid. So, so that is, is under, is to be underway. But beyond that, we're not sure what else we'll be able to accomplish at this point in time.
And the only thing that I would add, Mr. Friedman, is that we're looking forward to the opportunity to, for some flexibility. is that we're looking forward to the opportunity for some flexibility, should the state approval timeline provide for it and conditions allow it, that we could actually engage in some of the projects through the course of the school year with all necessary safety precautions in place as viable.
Thank you. So next, communications.
In communications, most recently, we were working on the pacing of budget communications, discussion of the vote, discussion of what was only known fairly recently about the format that the vote would take and any challenges that might come from getting the public up to speed on that. It was the primary topic of our recent meeting. Chris or Michael, is there anything that you would like to add?
I'm going to share the details that the district has put out, which is that because it's by mail. Well, first of all, I say thank you, Pauline, because it's you and all your colleagues have had a Herculean task to pivot to a whole new format that's never been done before to do this. So thank you for that. Because it is mailing, unlike with, if you're voting in the June 23rd primary, for example, has to be mailed by the day of June 23rd. In our case, has to arrive next Tuesday. So the expectation is, the suggestion is to send it by Friday. And additionally, there's a lockbox at the Dowslane District Office door that it's nine to five. I think you said this, Chris, on Tuesday, Monday and Tuesday, nine to five.
Correct.
And then if anybody has questions, they can reach out to you, Pauline, at your district email, which is available on our website.
Well said.
Thank you. So I think that's it for the committees that have met since our last meeting. So I don't know if there's anything else and any of the other trustees have to add from any of the other organizations that they interact with.
I would just say that for the Policy Committee, we updated the volunteer form involving PII. I think Dr. Harrison would agree that's the basic update from there.
Yes, there's a series of policies that were for first reading at the last board meeting related to updates and a number of policies associated with New York State's data requirements, ED Law 2D. So there were a series of policies and regulations that were updated and some supplemental exhibits associated with them. Additionally, the board completed a first reading of a policy related to timeout rooms that, again, the board will adopt at the next meeting on the 16th.
I just had a quick question. I presume since there's no announcement now, you previously announced that there are going to be the three committees related to looking into reopening. Do we know, is it when we might hear about the committees and the timelines? Is it something we might hear in the next week or two weeks?
And I referenced earlier that we'll be making announcements within the next week.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, this is another option. We have the ability for community members to comment. The comments should be limited to items that are on tonight's agenda. So again, you can use the Q and A comment feature in Zoom. Post your comments, there'll also be another opportunity for comment after our update on distance learning. So if you don't have a comment now, you do have another opportunity later in the meeting. So with that, I turn over back to you, Dr. Harrison and Ms. Ellis, for our discussion about distance learning.
Very good. So bear with me for one moment, please. I presume everyone can see the full slide this time, and please don't hesitate to wave at me if by chance it's not progressing on your end, oops, as it was on mine previously. So this evening, we're looking forward to presenting an overview of the strategic, I'm sorry, the distance learning experiences that we've had thus far in the school year, understanding what we went through in our process, the thinking behind the plans and the experiences and some examples of that experience, I think, are critical to help deliver a whole host of ideas that could inform our future work. As I said earlier, not only in a distance learning environment, but also for the work that we will be doing in the school district when we are in our physical classrooms. That said, this evening, we've kind of created an agenda for the points that we are going to discuss and cover this evening. And I would say that it is so complex. It is not possible for us to be able to give the true credit and attention to every single aspect of the work that has gone in to the distance learning plan, the work that teachers are doing each and every day, the partnership with parents and the community in supporting this. It would be like trying to explain overall school operations in a 30-minute presentation and then a discussion period that follows. So we've identified key areas that we thought were important to understand how we arrived at where we are. So thinking about the different phases and the evolution of our plans. I'm thinking of the role of synchronous and asynchronous learning and thinking that that doesn't always happen just in distance learning. What's the reality and how does that play out in a live, in-school experience? Examples of what distance learning looks like for our students here, the teaching supports that we've put in place. So what have we done to support this transition in our work going from the in-person onsite learning to a distance learning model? Thinking of the support that we've been providing to families. And I want to stop here to think that it's important that we must recognize that there's many families that have challenges in our community or are facing difficult times. And a conversation that we have to continue to have is about equity and access. And when we think about what we're doing for distance learning, what we're doing in our classrooms physically on a daily basis, we have to consider the needs of all of our families that are a part of our school community and making sure that we're connecting with each and every one of them. We'll talk about communication, some takeaways from what we've learned through this process, some reflections on the experience this year, and then begin to foreshadow the path moving forward and where we're going to head for 2021. That said, I'm going to invite my colleague, Ms. Ellis, to jump in and start to share some of the thinking on the evolution of distance learning in Irvington this year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Harrison. I want to echo the idea that this really is an evolution. We started with a very, very sudden decision, learning that schools were going to be closing and that all of our learning was going to be happening from a remote setting. And over time, we've made several major shifts, and we know that we're not done. We've tried to be responsive and listen to the teachers, the kids, the parents, everyone, to make changes as we go along, and we're going to continue to listen. So I'm sure everyone remembers in the beginning, phase one, we were really looking at pausing for a moment, having teachers be sure that kids were maintaining the level of skills that they had. And that was a time that we spent with our teachers building capacity to move into a next phase where they would actually be designing instruction that would be delivered over the internet as well as assignments that students would be doing at home. That was a period where we did some intense professional development on several of the applications that teachers would be using. And following that, we moved into phase two, where we had a flexible schedule at that point. Teachers had begun setting up Google Meets with their classes in addition to posting assignments. Again, professional learning was continuing, and we were still in a learning mode. One of the things that we realized was that we needed, going back to what Dr. Harrison said about access and equity, we needed to be sure that all students were having an opportunity to meet with all of their teachers. And we realized that we needed to move into phase three, where we would have an established schedule for each building. It looked different at each building, considering the readiness of the learners, their age, their ability to attend to online learning and the degree to which we could expect them to be working independently. And that's where we continue is right now in phase three. I know teachers continue to grow, they continue to change, and we're looking forward to continuing to look at our practice to grow it. And as Dr. Harrison mentioned, to take the feedback of all the stakeholders and think about what our next step will be. So the terms synchronous and asynchronous learning have been, they've been around a long time, but they've become really, really popular since this closure. And I just want to clarify exactly what we mean by synchronous and asynchronous learning. So in synchronous learning, the teacher and the students are interacting at the same time. And in a minute, I'll give you some examples of what that looks like in a classroom and what it looks like in a distance learning situation. Asynchronous means that the teacher and the students are interacting at different times. The teacher may be providing information that students then take away and work on. They're not working directly together at the same time. So in a classroom setting, if you're onsite in a school, some examples of synchronous activities involve a teacher doing a lecture, direct instruction, face-to-face class discussions, teachers doing live mini lessons, demonstrations, as well as teachers working with small groups and also holding individual conferences. In an asynchronous style, again, within school, students may be viewing a recorded lecture or demonstration. That might happen in the classroom where it isn't the teacher doing the instruction, but someone else in a recording is doing it. It may also be what we've learned a lot about in terms of flipped classrooms, where a student might watch a video at home for homework and then come into the classroom for a discussion. Any kind of independent practice is also asynchronous because the teacher and the student are not interacting together right at that moment. So if a student is doing independent reading, they're doing a writing assignment, they're doing any kind of tasks where they're applying the skills that they've learned, that would be an asynchronous style of learning. Small group work, where students are working with each other, but not necessarily with a teacher in that moment, is another example of asynchronous learning. And of course, the use of instructional technology. Now, when we move into a distance learning setting, a remote setting, you'll see that the activities are actually exactly the same. There will be opportunities for students to learn directly with the teacher, and there will be many, many opportunities for students to apply and practice and learn new things away from their, away from direct instruction with the teacher. So those two things have always happened in classrooms, and they're now happening in a remote setting. So I want to give you some examples of what distance learning looks like for Irvington students. I want to stress that this is a very, very small slice of lots of exciting things that happen in our district. I've gathered for you examples from a variety of grade levels, a variety of disciplines, give you a little peek into what it looks like. I do want to stress before we go into the examples that the amount of planning that is involved for a teacher delivering a lesson in a distance learning style far exceeds the amount of planning that was required in a traditional classroom. And this has really been the learning curve for all of us, I think for us at home and for us at school, is how it's different. So I'm going to show you some examples of what the assignments look like, the way students respond, and the way teachers respond to the student work. So we will start with kindergarten. And this is an example, this is a math lesson. Our kindergarten students are learning about number bonds, the way that two numbers come together to create another number. And you can see here that students have shown a variety of ways in which they take one number and combine it with another number to get a total. So we're looking at really, really wonderfully creative ways to show that. And if you look over on the right, you can see that actually, for some students, they'll add a story as part of this. And then moving on to first grade, one of the things that our first graders learn about, both in science and in their study of nonfiction text, is about diagrams and labels, those very important nonfiction text features. So this is an example of how students have learned how to use labels to label parts of different animals. And with a task like this, you can see that it's a pencil and paper task, which could happen in a traditional classroom setting as well. And students are handing in their work by either scanning it, taking pictures of it, and uploading it to Google Classroom so that their teacher can review their work.
I'd also highlight, Mary, it's these work products that you see, there's also levels of differentiation that occur in the level of complexity and how students are challenged. So if we go think about the kindergarten slides from the level of work and the complexity in going from the basic math work of the number of bonds integrated into a story. Here, thinking about the actual illustration of the work and working from a worksheet to the original student product.
Thank you. So move on to second graders. Second graders were learning about erosion and learned how to model this with a sock mountain, something that probably would not have happened in a classroom. But if you see the look on their faces, you can tell they were really excited to do this at home. And the teachers used flip grid as a way to gather the student work. So what each student did was they created their sock mountain as they took each sock off that would represent 50 years of time. And they demonstrated how they would start with a very, very tall mountain, and it would gradually erode over a period of multiple 50-year periods. So each one of these images on the screen represents one child's work. It's a short video in which they use both video and their voices to demonstrate their learning and show what they know about erosion. Moving on to fourth grade, this is an example of something from a poetry unit. Students learned a lot about poetry, and they used a program called Book Creator to create books about poems that they had chosen. So they were curating their own as well as writing their own, and this allows them the opportunity also to narrate it. You can see the young woman on the screen has headphones on, and she is reading her poem. So these are also created, again, through an application called Book Creator, and the student would hand in their assignment. They're learning about poetry through that application. The fourth grade one is really exciting. These students were learning, this is part of their music class, they were learning about how to create different kinds of instruments. And they then did a video in which they demonstrate their instrument and explain it. And we'd love to share a couple of those with you.
Hi, this is my instrument. It's a percussion instrument, and I'm going to play a hot ass song. Thank you.
My name's Heather Young. Today I will be playing the balloon head. It is a percussion instrument. This instrument you will need, you will need three rubber bands or anything that can hold a guitar or cups and a pencil. And I will be making this song that I made on this. There, that was my song.
Dr. Harrison, could you just go back to the.
Dr. Harrison, could you just go back to the previous slide? Thank you. So you could see from this that not only were the children learning about different kinds of instruments, they mentioned that these were percussion instruments, but they needed to do the design, the creation, and then produce this product in which they explained it. So in addition to learning about music, this is directly connected to our English language curriculum in which students are demonstrating their understanding through speaking and a demonstration. So then moving on to fifth grade, we're going to see an example of a math lesson. Our fifth graders are beginning their study of coordinate geometry. And you can see here an assignment that the students completed. And in the classroom, they might have done this on a worksheet with colored pencil. In the remote learning environment, this was done with an application called Cami, in which they were able to draw on the assignment and therefore fill in various planes to show, if you look at the different colors showing different points, and then the teachers are able to also respond on that same sheet.
Then I just want to, Mary, if I could just pause for a second to that we, I do know that there's a few comments that have been posed, that we will hold all comments until the end of the presentation. The board will have the opportunity to ask some questions, make comments, and then following that, we will address the community feedback.
So this is an example of some work that has happened in sixth grade. One of the things that our sixth graders do is learn to create claims that are then developed into essays. So this is an example of how students created a chart. And for each title and author, on the right-hand side, you'll see several students have entered their ideas about what a theme or claim statement might be for that story. So this is an example of a way that students can collaborate online and share ideas and share their thinking. And if we go to the next slide, you'll see how a student then took one of those claims to develop it into a literary response. This is a really nice one where the, the student is, brings in the coronavirus into their writing. And I just want to recognize that what is happening in our world and what is happening in, in all of our homes is affecting all of our kids. And the opportunities for them to process some of that through their work is something that our teachers are very, very aware of, that students need to talk about this, they need to share what's going on in their lives. So this is one example of how a student did that. And then if we move on to seventh grade art, our students used an application called Padlet. They did a virtual museum trip and selected a piece of art that had particular meaning to them and posted on this padlet with a link to the art and a comment about what it was that that piece of art, how it spoke to them. Again, this is a way in which students collaborate, they get to see each other's work. Okay, I see we've moved on. Seventh grade science, this is an example again of how students would can, would complete their work in an online environment. This is an example of students studying vocabulary in science class and entering, entering in their definitions, meanings, and using these new words in a sentence. This is a study of traits. In eighth grade, students are learning about potential and kinetic energy. This may look familiar, this is also the use of Flipgrid. So what Tina Bizetto did with this one, you can see in the top left is her contribution to the Flipgrid. So she provided a recorded session of direct instruction for the students about potential and kinetic energy. And then each of the students recorded their own demonstration of what they understood about it by selecting something, some situation within their home or within their life outside their home, where they could show what potential and kinetic energy was. So again, a way for students to collaborate, this is a way for them to be able to see each other's work, they can comment on it. It's a really exciting way for them to collaborate. Moving on to another example of art and another example of the way in which a student chose to use art to address what's going on with them in terms of coronavirus. The assignment was for them to use art to demonstrate something about how they felt their summer would be this, this summer, given the restrictions that we expect to be under. And this is an example of a child who made a really, really creative demonstration of, of how they're feeling about what their summer might look like. They wrote about it, and if, in the lower right, you'll see this is where the teacher responded and explained to the student what she was seeing in terms of their use of art and the way their design choices affected the communication of how they were feeling. In 10th grade English, students have been reading Born a Crime by Trevor Noah. And they use a variety of technology, in this example, Google Docs, to collect student-generated discussion questions. This is a really important part of having students think deeply, is not only to answer questions, but to create their own questions of what they feel they would like to discuss with their classmates. And then there was a follow-up assignment of a notebook assignment where they had four prompts for each chapter that they read. So this is an example of what an English class might look like. And this is probably very much like it would look in the classroom, but the students are sharing this online now. In a high school science lab, this is an example of the kinds of requirements that students have in presenting a lab. You'll see it's, it's pretty typical in terms of what a science lab might look like. When you get down to the last bullet, this is where the opportunity for choice comes in, which is a tremendously important aspect of student learning. They can choose a way in which they want to demonstrate this. They need to demonstrate all the typical things we would want to see in a science lab, but it might be a video, it might be a Google slideshow. So they have a wide variety of ways in which they can demonstrate their understanding. And then moving on to physics, we wanted to give you an opportunity to see the power of some of the online applications that students use. So this is an example of an interactive simulations. And Dr. Harrison, I'll let you play at making a circuit.
Whoa.
Did it not open? If you click on it right in the middle?
It takes a second. So I actually can, able to go in and using the lessons that have been learned, I can take a variety of different tools that are available to me as my electrical, junior electrical engineer that I'm trying to become. And I can begin to assemble that circuit by identifying the, the different processes that have to go with this by taking pieces of wire, making a connection to be able to build this. Somewhere along the line, I recognize that I'm going, may need to have a fuse to make sure that I don't burst my, my, my bulb. I'm going to need a power source at some point in time. And as we go through the process, using what I've learned, I can test my different connections that I'm building to see what my voltage is and have a variety of tools to apply my learning. So when we think about what may be happening in a classroom, in a typical lab situation, there's opportunities for us to be able to provide similar experiences from, from home. Give me a second to get back, Mary.
There you go.
It's not quite there yet.
There you go, yep.
No, it's not there yet, it's not presenting.
Okay, so in earth science, what you see here, oh, can you go back to earth science?
Yeah, I'm trying to do something else.
Okay, so this is an example of an investigation in earth science. And this looks at first like a fairly typical document that might be handed out in a classroom. What is different, if you look, if you look, you'll see several of the blue links. So embedded within the directions are resources for students to go to. And this is a very, very large part of the planning that teachers are engaged in, in moving their lessons online, is identifying all these different resources, building these ways of communicating with students so that they can access the resources. When you get down, oh, that's okay. In the bottom part of this, you'll see the table. And what is in the pink there is what students have put in. So this document is actually a combination of the assignment, the link to all the resources that the students need to complete the assignment, and the recording sheet in which students can record their observations, their questions, and then hand this in to the teacher. Now we can move on. So we also wanted to share with you, several of our high school students handed in absolutely amazing demonstrations of what they've been learning in their language classes. So we wanted to share with you a couple of those. And we probably just want to do short clips of that, because yeah, it's fairly long. Thank you. So in addition to what's going on in our classrooms, especially at the secondary level, we know that clubs are a tremendously important part of high school students' experience. And many, many of our clubs have continued, even though our school buildings are closed, still, kids are still meeting, they're enjoying learning together. And the pop print online has just been a really, really wonderful way for kids to share what's going on in school, what's going on in their life, and to continue the tradition of having the Erbys. So we wanted to share that example with you. So as you can see, the teachers have been creating a, really a wide variety of ways in which they're communicating with students. And there was, there's a lot of learning that went on for that to occur, and that learning continues. So I want to share with you some of the ways that we're supporting teaching in distance learning. Each week, I send the teachers a list of upcoming professional development opportunities. We're very, very fortunate in that our BOSI's has really stepped up with a tremendous amount of opportunities for teachers. And I look for the ones that I think our teachers will benefit from and highlight that for them. They have weekly grade level and department meetings. That collaboration right now is really critical. Our teachers are working very, very hard to ensure that all students are moving along in their learning. They're sharing what they're doing, they're sharing their successes, their challenges, what they learn about different applications. It's been really, really impressive to see what they've done. They have regular collaboration with our instructional leaders, which is our department chairs, our point people, and our, our coaches. We have usually twice a week a Q and A session with our Google PD team, who are teachers who are certified in Google and help our staff with using all the different aspects of the Google Suite. We have definitely increased our access to instructional technology. There's quite a number of applications that teachers have found that they want to use, and we work very hard to give them access to what they need. We've had several in-house workshops, as I mentioned, our teachers are going to BOSI-sponsored workshops. BOSI's is also sponsoring regional meetups so that teachers can get together and talk with teachers from other school districts and learn about what they're using, what's working well for them. And a lot of the vendors of, of the developers of these applications have also scheduled workshops for teachers. So in addition to supporting the teaching.
And if I could just say, stop to to send accolades your way, Mary, in that Mary has coordinated essentially a weekly PD program, identifying opportunities for many of our teachers. Communication goes out on a weekly basis that outlines a whole series of opportunities that they can take advantage of weekly. I also want to acknowledge Jay Stromwasser, our director of technology, who is our moderator for this meeting this evening. Behind the scenes, Jay has also coordinated layers and layers of professional learning to be able to support this transition to distance learning.
And I'd like to echo my kudos to Jay and his thanks for all the support that he's given us. So in addition to taking care of teaching and making sure that our teachers have the tools they need for teaching, we're also very aware that, just like our parents, our students, that our teachers are in a very, very challenging time. Castle, the collaborative for academic social emotional learning, which is an organization that recently came to visit our school district, did a survey of teachers, and you'll see on the right there, the word splash of what teachers shared they were feeling right now. And we recognize that this is a very challenging time and want to be sure that we're supporting them in doing their jobs and also supporting them with the challenges that they're experiencing, like all of us are experiencing right now. So some of the ways we're doing that is there's a weekly hangout online that Dr. Harrison does. I jokingly call these his fireside chats. I send out a weekly email to teachers with some advice about self-care, some links to things that might be useful to them. They have frequent faculty, grade level, and department meetings, which doesn't only build their skill and help in their collaboration as teachers, but helps them maintain a connection to their colleagues, to their school, to their community. All of our teachers have access to our school social worker. And we also have a community member who has very graciously provided access to mindfulness and yoga sessions for both our staff and our community.
Yeah, certainly, here we'd like to give lots of thanks to Jen Moness for her partnership for all the different meditation videos that she has produced on behalf of the district and that we've been proudly sharing with the community and getting great feedback and response on. Mary, I'm wondering if we could pause here for maybe, for a second, if you could talk, kind of connect some of the points that you made in this slide, going back to the school schedule conversation that we've talked, that you referenced before, and think about some of the structures that are in place for department-level meetings and some of the types of learning that happens in classrooms from the structure of thinking about how some of the school schedules work with instructional time, professional development time, student support time, and all the different meetings that are embedded into a teacher's day, which truly pushes the boundaries on either end of the school day, let alone the hours that the teachers put in around the clock to be able to prepare for the complex learning.
Sure, so when we moved into phase three with an established schedule, it was very clear that we needed to be sure that there were significant blocks of time where teachers would be able to work with each other, learn from each other, and again, keep that, that sense of community together. And that sense of community is also tremendously important, as we know, in a classroom. It's probably the most important thing that happens in a classroom. When students feel part of a classroom, they feel safe, they feel, and they're, they're ready to learn. At the elementary level, I know that many of our teachers meet with classes first thing in the day, in, in a kind of morning meeting in order to bring everybody together and set them up for learning for the day. That social emotional side of learning is a tremendously important aspect of learning in a school setting. And now, in a period of so much challenge and so much unrest and uncertainty, it's even more important for our families, for our students, and for our teachers. So having that time for regular contact with other teachers to talk about the students, to talk about the learning, to talk about the instructional technology they're learning, the challenges they're facing. We know that learning how to keep a group of students engaged in an online setting has been, has been a lot of work for everybody, lots of work on how to use the mute button. And so we've made sure that we have that time. The front, there's a lot of time on Fridays when students are given independent assignments. And this is one of the ways in which we've always wanted students to grow, to become self-motivated, to become learners who can choose and delve deeply into something that's of interest to them. So the teachers have worked really, really hard to make sure that students have access to a wide variety of things that they might be interested in, in a wide variety of subjects. And this allows students an opportunity to do some independent learning, some exploration, while our teachers have an opportunity to work together.
Okay, thank you.
So in addition, as I mentioned, to supporting students and teachers, we certainly want to be supporting our families. And Dr. Harrison mentioned earlier the aspect of access and equity. And I'm sure that everyone is learned, learning that this is an issue across the whole country as people have moved to distance learning. The ability to have enough devices and to have sufficient internet access has been a challenge for many, many families. We've met that challenge by distributing Chromebooks. To date, we've distributed 187 Chromebooks to students in our district, as well as seventeen Jetpacks, which are devices that will help students who may not have internet access or may not have sufficient internet access in their home, have that. So we've tried very, very hard to identify the students and families who need that support and make sure that they have it. We've also made sure that our families have access to our teachers, our administrators, the psychologists, the social worker, and as we mentioned before, some mindfulness and yoga, because we want to be sure that we're taking care of everyone's needs and lots of different needs. There have been several opportunities for students to pick up different things from school. And at one of our, at one of the schools on the campus, teachers wanted to do book clubs, and they hadn't sent those books home. And so we arranged an opportunity for students to come and get those materials. We are also providing breakfast and lunch to approximately 100 students per day. We know that if a family is in a situation of food insecurity, that that's going to be a challenge for the family in terms of students' learning. Students need to have their very basic needs met in order to be ready to learn. So that's been a very, very big focus for us. And Dr. Harrison, I think I'll pass back to you on this one.
Yeah, so communication has been a real priority across the district. As you know, you've seen lots of communications that come from me. In the beginning, I was sending two to three letters per week. We've kind of backed down to about once a week with regular updates on timely subjects. But in place of that, I've also connected with some other opportunities. One example here is a weekly Facebook Live broadcast. You can join me Wednesdays at noon on Facebook where I will provide some regular updates from the school district, things that are often in real time and things that we may not ordinarily be able to capture in a, in a letter. Our, certainly principals are involved in sending out regular communications to the school community. Daily emails going now from Dazz Lane and Main Street to be able to set the stage for the day. Some cases, we're seeing wonderful, you know, salutes to the flag with Dr. Cantor is one example. PAC meetings, our PACs are continuing to meet with our school leadership in the rect, in the regular course of the, of the school day as they typically would. We've used N Word now on a number of different occasions. And of course, taking full advantage of social media wherever possible. And then in each of the board meetings, we've been giving updates of the work that we've been doing along the way. Some, some highlights of some of the examples here. If you look on the, the bottom right-hand side, you can see students actually doing the pledge along with the Dr. Cantor and, and the level of engagement that is occurring in, in each of our schools. We've also examples, our nurses have started a regular communication that's going to be going out to the school community. This time more than ever, our nurses are going to play a critical role. We called our nurses Fab Four because they are an amazing talented group of healthcare professionals that care for our students and our staff. And they've been working very hard behind the scenes right now, supporting countless families on a daily basis and deeply engaged in the necessary steps for, you know, the reopening of school. Additionally, thinking about the work that's happening, not only thinking about children coming into school on a daily basis, but we're thinking about the next steps, about where we're, where we're headed. Our guidance counselor, counselors at the high school are doing a Wellness Wednesday where they're sending out notices each week. They're also facilitating numerous virtual experiences, opportunities related to the college process that may have otherwise been lost. They found ways to facilitate these important events online to be able to support our students and their families. So when we think about where we are right now, Mary really talked about all of this being a progression and an evolution of our work. We recognize that this distance learning has been challenging for everyone. When we think about what's happened, I, I reflect often back to a comment that Mr. Graber made at a, at a prior meeting and thinking about, these are really emergency plans. And certainly, we are, this is distance learning. But school districts across the nation responded at a, really a state of emergency. We had prepared following guidance in advance of the, the first initial closure that, that first two weeks, and because that was the guidance of what to expect. At that time, we did not foresee this, moving into a closure for months at a time. So with that, the transition has been difficult. It's been difficult for our faculty, staff, our administration. But there's also been lots of challenges, as we acknowledge, for families and, and students along the way. We try to find that balance for everyone, but there's needs of support that come into this equation. The amount of support that our families have needed has, has been a challenge where we think about our community being relatively well-to-do. Yes, many people have devices in their house. But as was referenced earlier, we've given out hundreds of Chromebooks for use. We've given out Jetpacks for internet access in homes. Families that were struggling with needs of childcare and kids that are in childcare during the, the school day while this distance learning is occurring. But then the basic human needs. I need to give certainly accolades to the Recreation Department. Joe Arcino and his staff have been incredible in supporting people in our community. Gina Menendez, our social worker, has been outstanding. The PTSA has been phenomenal, donating over $4,000 from the Bulldog Family Fund, BFF, that has gone directly to the purchase of grocery store gift cards to help feed our families, to supplement the meals that the school has been providing. We've recognized through this process that face-to-face student connections with the teacher are critical and important. And if you see the evolution of our work, we recognize the value of that and see where that need lies today in the work that we're doing. And as we're moving to the future, that is quite a consideration as well. You know, there's challenges in, in learning environments. We hear lots of different stories from families about the difficulty to engage their children at home. Their kids are often distracted, that there's lots of activity in a house. You could have multiple children participating in remote learning and dogs running about the house and the phone rings and mom and dad are working as well. So the focus is a real challenge for, for many of our students. Through this experience, we've also acknowledged that there's no just right amount of you fill in the blank. You know, certainly there's a desire to want to provide more of many things. And I referenced the face-to-face connections. There's a desire and a need to really want to, to move forward and provide more opportunity on that front. However, we have families that are also reaching out to us and saying, you know, this is just the right amount. Where, help us, this is too much. Where families aren't able to coordinate with school schedules because of other demands in the house and in their lives. Families that are overwhelmed with all that is going on in, in life. So when we think about the anxieties that, that we're facing and thinking about finances, coronavirus, thinking about the tensions that are present nationally now, that is impacting everybody. Faculty, students, staff, and trying to navigate all this and bringing it together is really, really difficult. But we know that when we're looking at moving forward, there's going to be shifts for us. We've recognized some of the challenges that are sitting there for us that when we think about teaching and learning, a teacher just can't necessarily take a lesson that they had planned two months ago or a lesson that they had taught last year that they would have just tweaked for this year or, or modified to meet students' needs this year and deliver it in a distance learning environment. The whole concept of lessons is really rethought and has to be delivered in a different manner. We've recognized that it's challenging to assess student progress and student achievement in this environment because of the differences that exist in access, the environment in which students are learning. And thinking that, well, is this student's work his or her own? Or has someone been over their shoulder supporting them with that? So getting a true sense of that authentic growth that a student may demonstrate is a real challenge. The inequities are truly modified and magnified in ways that we don't typically see in, in the school. You know, there's students that struggle in any number of ways. But when they're in school, we have the staff, we have the resources to be able to really support them. But at home, it's a real challenge. Phone calls, emails, text messages to the, to the parents, communications with the students. The social worker going to the house can't quite get it done in the same way. And then we have to think of some of the real basics. Learning how to mute and unmute is a challenge. I think back to a communication I sent out two weeks ago where some reminders, because there's been real challenges. I think of teachers telling us about balloons bouncing off the screen as they're trying to teach, teach a lesson or that fork that comes floating over a screen with a, a parent or a sibling that's feeding their child during the lesson. So there's lots of challenges out there and all things that we are prepared to begin to, to work through to the best of our ability. So when we think about where we are now and that we certainly know that when we bring this school year to a close in, in the next couple of weeks, that we're going to be seeking feedback from stakeholders through some surveys. So when we think of stakeholders, we need to hear from parents. And we need to hear from our faculty and staff about those experiences. And we're going to bring those data sets together and to allow us to be able to start to understand and prepare for the future, which I'll get to in the next. We are going to be able to report student progress to parents, albeit in some different fashion than we traditionally would have because of the assessment challenges that we, that I acknowledged moments ago. We're needed, we know that we're going to begin to adjust curriculum. I certainly want to give accolades to our curriculum leaders, our instructional leaders, our administrators, Mary, who's already begun conversations with all of our department chairs, initiating dialogue with our grade level leaders, the discussion about what has to happen with curriculum for the fall to identify gaps in learning and to make adjustments where appropriate. We're in the process of starting to launch efforts to develop pre-assessments that will be used in September to truly evaluate where students' needs are. So when we've taken that initial step based upon feedback that we've received from teachers and from stakeholders to, to modify curriculum, now we're going to go to the next level and really assess where students' gaps may exist in knowledge and/or skill, where we have to go back and reteach things, and where we're truly going to have to differentiate in more dynamic ways than we have in the past, because students are going to come in at all different levels. Again, thinking about those inequities that were previously referenced. And then we're going to have to really celebrate the hard work of, of everybody. Our students and staff have really done a good job. And I would add parents to this because they've been critical partners in getting us to where we are today. So when we think to where we're going next, we are going to be announcing, as was referenced earlier in the meeting tonight, the formation of a reopening task force. This task force is going to have three different FOKI. First is going to be curriculum instruction. We're going to take a look at what we've learned from our previous distance learning phases. And we're going to develop recommendations for what we're calling Distance Learning 2.0. So if we think of where we've been now and consider this year's experience as 1.0, we've had a 1.1, a 1.2, and a 1.3. In the fall, we will launch what would be a 2.0. And I'm not going to predetermine necessarily what that is because the feedback that we're going to receive is going to be valued and we want to honor it to the extent possible. But what I can tell you is critical for us. And to go back to the comment that I made earlier, that we recognize that personal interaction and FaceTime, the interaction with students is essential and necessary. And that we fully anticipate that we're going to have more opportunities in Distance Learning 2.0 for direct instruction on a daily basis, more opportunities for small group interaction that will be scheduled on a regular basis in our schools. So we're going to see that evolution. We're going to continue to see opportunities for student help. Some households may not witness it and experience it, but I can tell you those help sessions have become a lifeline for some families and some students. Teachers are engaging with children to be able to help them individually in small group sessions. There's check-ins that are being scheduled outside of those hours based upon the needs that are being presented. So we fully expect to see an evolution on all fronts here. The second area that we're going to focus on is social emotional learning. In doing so, we're going to have another committee that is going to focus on all of the needs of our school community. So certainly, we're going to be thinking about our students. How do we reintegrate kids into school, especially our youngest who have not been physically in a building for six months, or to think about those that haven't had lots of social interaction for six months. To think about the different supports that are going to be put in place, the counseling that's going to be needed in our schools, and knowing that there's going to be a need for ongoing support on multiple levels to support children, families. And I have to tell you, to think about our, our staff here too. And I don't want this to come across as something where we're looking to, to pat anyone on the back or to think that our staff need to be handled in a, in a special way. The struggles that we are all enduring, our teachers are facing the same challenges. We have many staff members who have experienced illness in their immediate family. We have many staff members who have lost family members. We have staff members whose immediate family members are first responders, doctors that have been caring for people throughout all this. This has been a traumatic experience for them. And at the same time, they've been navigating their professional responsibilities and doing a fine job in doing so. I would also say that when we look at the current national crisis that's growing out of the Floyd situation and all the, the unrest that is in our country right now, we also have people that have fear, have concern for what's happening, have family being affected by this in different parts of the country, their immediate family being affected. The number of our faculty and staff members who have immediate family members that are firefighters, police officers in the city that are facing these challenges today. So we have to consider those real challenges. When we step back, we think about the operational subcommittee. And here, we're thinking of all the different components that are going to be associated with the six operations in school. Here is going to include all the health precautions and health and safety measures that are going to be implemented in all facets of school operations, the management of our school facilities, to continue to focus on meal service, food services, whether that's in distance learning or back in school, knowing it's going to have to be done differently than before. And then transportation, what might transportation look like? How many kids are actually going to ride the buses? How are we going to function in this new reality of what school may look like come September? This committee is going, these three committees are going to work. There'll be a steering committee that are going to guide the work of the three committees. I've created a project timeline, again, all things that are going to be announced in the coming week. And that by the end of July, we're going to be presenting all of this work to the entire school community and submitting plans for, to the State Education Department for approval, just as we've had to for every step of this way through 1.0, 1.1, 2, and 3. We've had to submit plans to State Education Department for distance learning or the continuity of learning is what they called it. We had for meal distribution as well as childcare. So that level of reporting accountability will be there on the state side. That said, Mr. Friedman, I think it's a great opportunity to engage in some conversation. That said, Mr. Friedman, I think it's a great opportunity to engage in some conversation with the board, answer questions that you may have, and then turn attention to some of the comments that we have received from our community members. I am gonna say that I am gonna stop sharing my screen at this point because it makes it challenging for me to navigate the conversation. So, thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison and Ms. Ellis. And we now have the opportunity for the board to ask questions. I do want to note that, as I said earlier, there will be another opportunity for public comment. And we will attempt to read those comments. So it will be similar to if you were at a live meeting and got up to the microphone and spoke instead. We'll read the comments to the extent feasible. But I want to remind the community and people who may not have attended our meetings in the past about the practice regarding comments. We do need you to state your full name and address for your comments. So right now, the community comment period isn't open, but it will be after the board is done with their discussion with Dr. Harrison and the rest of the administrators. So at that point, we'll move on to the public comments. But if you're gonna post comments that you would like to have read as part of the meeting, please provide your name and address. And then we will read the comment and, to the extent possible, address them here, or if not, they'll be followed up on at a later date. So with that, as we've been doing at our meetings in this format, I'll go down our metaphorical row.
One question?
Yes?
I just, I wanna open up the opportunity for other trustees to do the same that I would like to offer, which is to defer my questions till after we do community comment. So I leave that to the rest of the board to decide, but that's what I'd like to do for myself. Just, I know they've been waiting a long time and they're not used to the structure, so.
Yeah, I mean, Michael, I appreciate that. I do hear that. But I do think we should try to maintain our usual practice of allowing the board to reflect and ask comments first. So that would be my preference, given that that is our usual practice. And I know we're in differing times and it's an unusual meeting format, but I do think we should try to stick with what is our typical practice of allowing the board to ask questions and reflect on the presentation first, since that also may inform some of the questions that the community members have based on our questions and the dialogue we have with the administrators.
I was gonna ask, if possibly then, to build on what Mr. Hannah is suggesting, that perhaps we can limit our questions as much as possible because people have been waiting to hear their comments. So, and I did wanna just also ask, how will people submit their names and addresses? Should they resubmit a Q and A and put their name and address? How do you expect them to do that?
I would expect that when the community comment period is open, people will post comments at that time with their name and address and the comment that they would like to make or the question they have at that point will read it. So there'll be that opportunity, as there is at all meetings, for the public to ask their questions at the time when the public comment period is available.
Okay, I know we're piloting this and I understand that I have all due deference for that. So what I would like to suggest is, since we've collected a number of questions and answers and the nature of comments, that people who did not provide their names and addresses, please, they need to resubmit, I would say. Isn't that correct?
Well, also, I'm not sure if everyone's comments are comments that are ones that are to be read. So I would suggest that everyone post their comments again in the Q and A, which after our question starts, since some of the comments were, I think, more stream of conscience reflections as opposed to comments as they would normally be where a community member would go to the microphone and read a comment or ask a question in there a lot of three-minute time. So I think it would behoove the community members to provide their name, address, and whatever comment they would like to have read publicly in the Q and A section. Once that starts, we can, you know, it's, I believe they're timestamped, so we can say now, you know, starting with anything that we see after nine o'clock, we'll then use that, treat that as a public comment, which will then be read. But I don't think it's best practice to go back and read multiple people's reactions, especially since typically every community member is afforded their three minutes to speak and everyone's given a chance to speak before we allow others to speak. So I wouldn't want to see some get their questions read and others not. So I would suggest that, you know, starting now, if people have comments that they'd like read, post it with their name and address. And then after the board has their discussion, we'll then turn to those comments.
And just having seen the comments, we receive them, so community knows. We do receive them and see them on this side. Comments certainly will be acknowledged. And we certainly will, when you enter through the Q and A function, that is where the comments pop up directly to the board. So we will acknowledge the comments. Some are, may not always be appropriate for us to read based upon some of the feedback that has been submitted. So I'm going to acknowledge that we're not going to be able to read everything that is being addressed. Those questions that we can answer briefly, we will try to do so. Others, we may follow up with a written publication at a later date following the meeting.
So with that, a little bit more time on process than I think we all anticipated, but such is life in our new virtual meeting. With that, Maria, since you would be the next one in line, now is your time for questions or reflections.
I actually... Oh, is it on? Oh, I'm so sorry. I did not unmute it. I have no questions at this time, sorry. But did you make, I hope it's clear to everyone who is listening, that they could submit their questions now, right? The questions from nine on are the ones that we're going to read aloud and answer if appropriate.
Correct.
Okay.
Maura?
Thank you. I had a question from the page about public communications. So I don't think we need to go back to that page, but I wanted to confirm with the amount of information that's been flowing over us all over this past few months. PAC meetings and opportunity for parents' concerns to be communicated to principals has been taking place during the quarantine? I wasn't aware. So there were virtual meetings that took place in the same way?
Yes.
Okay.
I actually participated in some of the meetings myself.
Thank you. Yeah, and then the other question briefly that I had was about the Google PD team, which was, I think, a training for teachers. Those are the internal, those are the folks who have been, who are our staff members, who are trainers, or those are?
Yes, those are staff members who've been certified as Google educators, meaning that they have a high level of expertise in the Google platforms. And they support our teachers throughout the year. If teachers have questions, they can go to them. But we have a dedicated time at the secondary level for professional development at the end of the day. Jay is also one of our Google educators who supports staff. And they have been meeting with, they've been doing presentations as well as having Q and A sessions, virtual Q and A sessions, where teachers come on to ask for support about things that they're working on.
So for those that aren't aware, perhaps, of the sort of, I'd say the slimness of the tech support that teachers have, could you, could you please clarify, other than Jay, who is the full-time director of technology here, how do teachers get their questions answered? Their questions are answered basically through other teachers who are trained?
So there are other teachers who are trained and they've been appointed as part of the Google PD team. And they are present in all of the buildings. So teachers have people there when they're physically there. And now and they're not, people they know that they can reach out to. There's also a help desk that teachers can reach out for help. And Jay has also put together, Jay and the rest of his team have put together an amazing document of resources for teachers. Many of the links are to videos or tutorials that have been developed by our teachers as well as external things. So we're trying to offer lots and lots of ways for teachers to access that support. One of the things we did early on was to survey the staff about how they wanted to learn about technology. And from that, we learned that most people want to be able to look at something on demand as opposed to a scheduled session. And that led partly to my weekly email where I could help them see, you can go to this, you can go to this, you can go to this. And each week, I would highlight a new product. Now, I don't mean a new product, a product that might be new to them, and how they could go and learn about it. So there's a wide variety of resources for them.
The resources are wide, but the people who actually interact and who can help to teach are few. And I only wanted to point that out because the help desk that you referred to, Mary, is a contracted service. Is that right? That's the, I just wanna understand when you say help desk.
I'll jump in at this point, Maura, so that it is true. Our resources are very thin on that front. We do have the tremendous value of having a number of talented, well-trained teachers that are a resource for others. But they are also teaching a full-time job. So they're doing their work in and around teaching during the day, their professional responsibilities, leading PD during the meeting times, and then outside of hours. Jay is a one-man show that's supporting everybody that's going on. We have a contracted service through Edgitech that's been a district for a number of years. We have two technicians that respond to the help desk tickets that are out there. So if a family had a district Chromebook, whether a middle schooler or one of the hundreds that we've loaned, if you submit a help desk ticket, those folks are actually helping with the technical fixes, the breaks, so to speak, and the challenges that are happening with the devices themselves. So when we think of hundreds of staff members working remotely and thousands of students learning remotely, realistically, we have three full-time dedicated people supporting that entire operation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I just want to remind people who may be submitting comments through Q and A that please provide your name and address in the body of your comments. That is our usual practice at all board meetings, that community members identify themselves with their name and address. So if you would like your comment read, please put in the body of your comments your name and address. So, Michael, you said you were gonna defer your questions till later?
Yes, that's correct.
Dave?
There we go. My mic on? I'm good?
You're good.
Okay, so, thank you so much, Dr. Harrison, Mary, for a nice, really, really robust view of a lot of the really great things that are going on. And I think it's really nice for the community to see a lot of the great things that are going on that they might not be experiencing themselves. You know, whereas I wanna kind of head with some of my questions and reflections on what I saw just now. And I think this also might tap on some of the comments or questions in the Q and A as well because I have some similar questions. So equity, when I think of equity, I think in terms of, you know, the experience that someone at the high school level might be having versus somebody at the Dow's Lane level. And I think about the equity on the side of the student and of course, on the side of the educator. You know, the resources that a high school teacher might have available just in terms of availability versus someone who's teaching phonics, right? Not having that in-person availability at the grade-two level and understanding the disparity. I feel like some of the equity stuff could best be addressed with some of the community members if we figured out a way to communicate with them about what expectations look like. And understanding, you know, what a duration of a school day looks like in this sort of world, right? When it comes to, I think now that there's this sort of idea of asynchronous and synchronous learning and, you know, we're gonna sort of be entering this world of blended learning and sort of getting ahead of something like that, and sort of breaking down the terminology like you've started to do here, but taking it to a deeper level and helping teachers, I'm sorry, parents, understand the things that teachers are doing, like you started to touch on tonight, right? Like, I don't know, I hadn't seen much of that flipgrid stuff, right? Like, that flipgrid stuff looks amazing. Is that happening only in one grade versus another grade? And sort of start, as we move forward, using this reflection as a springboard to continuous improvement, should we still be virtually bound going forward or in a blended manner bound? Sort of bringing the parents into the planning piece, which is an unusual thing, but helping, I think it would help parents set expectations. You know, one of the first things I noticed during this was, wow, school day's a lot shorter, right? And, you know, why is that? And what are the reasons for why is school day's a little shorter? Helping parents understand that, you know, we are in extraordinary times and that, yes, their workday is going to be interrupted, much like my workday is interrupted, you know, and everybody's. And sort of, but understanding and helping them to manage that piece, which I think would go a long way in helping them understand the rigors on the teaching side, right? While not necessarily seeing the rigor on the learning side. You know, where, and I think there are some things we can think about. And I know some of the things that we talked about, I think, at the last curriculum meeting, you know, sort of this idea of how can we assess kids and give feedback to kids so that parents see that kids are cycling through learning, right? You know, and it'll help people understand the difference, or parents and even students and teachers, what, you know, what's new learning versus what's review. You know, when is that happening? You know, how long are they going to be on decimals, you know, using Xern? And is it only going to be Xern? Or there are gonna be these other things? And in the PD, in terms of continuous improvement, are there ways we can open up doors to bring in different vehicles? Like project-based learning, for instance, you know, things that were present in, you know, something like the Project Lead the Way traditionally, but now maybe sort of start to see that we can use something like the next-generation science standards to really create project-based learning across multiple subject areas. And because of the APPR situation, you know, there's a lot of room for real creative risk here, right? And help teachers sort of build from that platform so parents can see them building that rigor for their kids over time. You know, I mean, what I saw there is amazing, but I know there's another side to it, right? And I know that there are teachers that are struggling along with kids and families that are struggling. And how can we best help them with the best tools so that parents can see that, you know, there is this attempt at continuous improvement to build a rigorous curriculum experience for my, you know, our kids while we're all learning in this world together, right? I think if, you know, there's a forum, maybe a weekly forum. I know you said something before about coffee, you know, coffees with Chris and all these, you know, whatever you said before, whatever it's called. But having multiple forums and using the Zoom platform that we have to have, you know, different engagements with parents about that have these questions, I think as we move forward in this unknown time will be very beneficial. So I just wanted to throw that out as more feedback and reflection.
David, thank you. You know, you bring up, I think, a very important point and one that I know that we need to give more attention to is not only communicating with parents what's going on with the district and communicating what students are learning, but supporting parents in how to support kids in learning in a home environment. It's been challenging for everybody. So, yeah.
It is. And then, you know, just to also add that, you know, we had Teacher Appreciation Week right before all of this kind of went down. And I, you know, goodness, I have such a great deal of appreciation for our teaching staff. And, you know, any way that we as a board and, you know, me as a parent can help support the continuous improvement so that we can, you know, sort of start to see how kids can learn and grow further will be, you know, I'm certain of that.
Thank you.
Was that, was it the extent, Dave? Or did you have something else? Should we move on to the next person in the row? I just wasn't sure.
I mean, I guess, you know, just more, my question, and you don't have to answer it now, you will answer it over time, is... it now, you will answer it over time, is I'm real curious to see what new tools we can introduce to the ones that you've already had. Like we start to see, like, how can we use Padlets? You know, you know, how can Jason sort of push that avenue and different tools in and things like that? And so, so let's, again, a question and more an observation.
And please know you only saw a small slice of what's out there.
Okay, here we go. So I suppose my questions are much more granular than Dave's are. I'm specifically trying to understand, remember, I am a trustee, but I'm also only in terms of a parent, I'm familiar with the middle school experience. But when I look at the Dow's Lane experience from the optics of the, the plan that's been provided, that I've seen publicly, it appears that there are, I just want to clarify that at this point, there are three half-hour sessions of what you would call under the presentation, direct synchronous instruction planned for during the week. And I'm trying to understand, I know that we've talked about phase three going into 2.0, but perhaps there could be some kind of phase four. Is there any idea of perhaps adding additional sessions of those half-hour so that there's maybe five days? Or is there any, and may perhaps it happens now, or is there anything involving like small group learning? Like I've seen that described in the presentation. I'm trying to understand how that may exist there because it's not reflected on what I've seen.
So in addition to the sessions that are shown, there are extra help sessions every day. And so that's when teachers are working with small groups. For any of our students who need extra support, there's also an RTI period built in. And for students who receive any kind of related services, PHOT, anything like that, that may be another period. There was actually a parent that I spoke with who said, I'm going from one meeting to the next for my child all day. I need a break. So I, part of it also depends on the child and the individual child's program, whether there are more sessions or not. And I'm going to echo what Chris said before, I don't want to predetermine what the committee's recommendations will be. But we certainly have heard from parents, from some parents, that they would like to see more time with direct instruction with the teacher. We've also heard from some parents that they think what we have is great. So we're going to learn through our survey where, where the bulk of the community, we hope the bulk of the community will respond to the survey, will learn what people feel will be best for their students. And the committee can then look at those recommendations. We will have parents on that committee. And so they'll be part of that decision-making about what it looks like next.
Any idea, just a ballpark idea of when that survey may be available? Is it?
As, as Chris mentioned, we're looking to make announcements about putting the committees together in the next week. And putting that survey out will be part of that committee work.
Okay. And then I had one other granular question. You know, it's very interesting. I wasn't aware about the book club concept, you know, something that's provided, that's actually a hard copy of something that's been distributed. I know that in previous budget years, we've talked about how Amplify Science and PLTW for K through three has actual packets of materials that are hands-on. I'm just wondering if in the context of Dow's Lane, those sort of packets of materials have been distributed in any way similar to the book club model we were discussing?
They've done more of a shift to things being virtual. And that's probably something that we will look at as within the curriculum part of our reopening committee to look at, do we want to think about how we can send more materials home if that's appropriate? In the example I showed you with the sock mountain, in class, students might have experienced that building and modeling erosion with other materials that what might have been common in the classroom. In this way, they had to construct that in their home.
Right. I, I think, you know, it's just, it's a historical issue that would have been before you luckily came on board. So there were a lot of budget conversations about those specific available materials that are part of every budget year. So that's why I raised it. So thank you for your input on that. Thanks. I also want to make sure to send time to the Q and As that are building up, so I will mute myself now.
Erin?
Yep, I'll be quick because I also want to give time to the Q and As. But Mary, thanks so much for the overview of everything that's going on. I think there are a lot of great things that are happening. And I actually heard feedback from a parent about the erosion project that the kid had at home and how much they loved it and what a great visual tool it was. And it sounded amazing. So I also think Amplify is a great software right now that's, that's really working really well in the remote environment. So I think those are great. That's a great tool that we recently engaged with. So I think that's great. My only question, and I've asked this before, but as we talk about phase 2.0 for whatever we, whatever numeric we want to put after the evolution of the plan, if there's a way, I know that this is expensive and I totally understand dollars, but just to look at the idea of the ability maybe to zoom, to have kids who are home, if there's a hybrid model where some kids are home and some are in the classroom, to be able to zoom directly into the classroom. And again, we probably can't do that on a district basis, but maybe for this K through three school, maybe that's an option that maybe that, you know, might be a more bite-sized tangible cost that we could look at to figure out how to incorporate. And I know this is the worst year to talk about spending that money, but I just want to throw that out there, that, that might also help to answer some of the questions that are out on the Q and A. And I will leave it to that. So I'm just throwing that out. Thanks.
So Erin, I'll just say that that idea and many, many others are some of the things that we'll be looking at in the reopening committee.
I know you are.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. So I guess I had at least a couple of just initial thoughts, comments I just wanted to put out there. One, I mean, I know we've used a lot of third-party apps as part of this process. And I would hope as part of our reflection, we look at the apps and whether they were successful or not, and how either they are supplementing or in lieu of teacher-created materials and where the right balance is between third-party materials and teacher-created materials and, and how we can try to, as we look back and reflect on our next step with less of an emergency focus and more of a longitudinal focus at how our curriculum will align with both the apps and whatever teacher-created materials we may have. So, and, you know, and I think, you know, in terms of live interaction with teachers, I know this can be a big topic for exploration in our development of 2.0, but looking at the amount of extra help that was provided and what the utilization of that extra help looked like to see if we had the right amount, not enough, too much. But also, you know, I know some parents struggle at times with, how do I know that my child needs to go for extra help? You know, I think in this environment, it's challenging for students maybe to understand that, no, they weren't fully grasping something, they need to come and whether teachers are prodding students to come or what was most effective in terms of getting the kids who need extra help to utilize those services. So, you know, something else that I think would be important to be part of the discussion. And while I have a lot of other thoughts, I'll just leave you with one more so that we can turn to the community piece. And that's also on the lab instruction part, looking at how we can incorporate some more of the group work that goes on ordinarily in a school day in our distance learning 2.0, some of the collaborative learning, whether it's small groups meeting with teachers in connection with a project, or kids themselves having the ability to collaborate together to try to replicate, if possible, some of the natural learning that normally goes on in a remote environment. Do trustees have anything further before we turn to the comments we perceived? Hearing nothing, I guess I'll start reading and then when my voice gives out, someone else can jump in. But looking at our timestamp, the first one I have is from Greg and Amy Floyd, nine Manor Pond Lane. And I will apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name in this process. So you have my apology upfront on that one. The comment was, why haven't there been smaller group meetings with the classroom teachers? I think my kids have the best two teachers in second grade and want to maximize their interaction with these outstanding teachers. However, currently there are only three 30-minute group meetings a week, which are more like morning meetings with their actual classroom teachers. Is it possible to have a teacher reach out, sorry, reach each student for a certain amount of time each week, even if only 10 to 15 minutes, that they can actually gauge their progress? How in a distance learning environment can you really assess where each student's learning is otherwise?
So I think as we pointed out before, we, we definitely understand that assessment in this environment is, is extremely challenging. The extra help period is an opportunity for teachers to meet with small groups. We've certainly left it up to the teachers how they structure that 30 minutes. I do know that there are some teachers who have chosen to break it up into smaller sessions with different students coming at different times. And I think that question of how often, how much, and how many students in terms of that face-to-face interaction is going to be a major part of our discussion as we think about what next year will look like.
Next, we have a comment from Jennifer and Russell Lippman, 56 Manor Pond Lane. I heard Dr. Harrison say that some families complain the distance learning volume is too much. In my experience, the Dow's Lane curriculum typically takes well less than an hour every day. If it's too much for some families, it does not need to be strictly required, required in quotes, but we should at least provide it to those who are interested. Otherwise, the burden is on those families to supplement their kids themselves, either by paying to hire tutors or having the parents try to find additional curriculum. A real school day provides so much more curriculum. Why should a virtual school day provide that much less?
So I'm there. Yeah, I just, well, you can certainly piggyback. I just want to maybe step back for a moment and say that I think we need to frame the conversation that we're having in that this discussion isn't unique to Irvington. The conversations that, that we are having, the types of feedback that we're having and some of the feedback that conflicts, and if we think back to that slide that I spoke to earlier, then said, how much is enough of blank? That conversation is happening globally. It's happening across the state. And we certainly look to the, we have expectations that our work is going to, to certainly evolve. And there's going to have to be adjustments and other supports, as I think, Mary, you said in responding to David's comments earlier, and how to help families navigate the challenges of distance learning. But I, I just want to iterate the point that what we are saying here and what we are talking about here is not unique to Irvington. Same types of challenges are happening everywhere. And there's many, many school districts that we provide much more experience, many more experiences than, that there are more direct opportunities for students and higher quality instruction than we're seeing, or higher quality learning experiences than are seen in other places. So we need to frame it. We certainly, certainly want to provide our children nothing but the best here in Irvington. And we're on a journey here, just as we are in the classroom with in-person onsite learning. This is going to continue to be an evolution. Mary, you going to be at something separate to add?
Um, thank you. You said much of what I was going to say. I'll leave it at that.
But Dr. Harrison, I do want to add to something you said because I don't think we touched on it, but as you did allude to, this is an issue that's not just facing Irvington, it's facing all school districts in our region and many throughout parts of the country. And while we are focused on our efforts here, we're also mindful of what's going on in other districts. And there are efforts both at the superintendent level and administrative level where there is active discussion and collaboration with our districts, both in our immediate quad district area, who we typically partner with on different initiatives, as well as across the lower Hudson region, where people are reflecting on their experiences in their own districts on distance learning and trying to provide some lessons learned, best practices and other tips to others so that we can leverage the information and experiences in other districts to try to learn what else we can, that may have been successful elsewhere that we may want to try to incorporate in our 2.0.
Correct. And I would say, Brian, I thank you for making those comments. And I want to acknowledge that Mary has become a leader in her five months here, obviously with quite a reputation and, and years of experience in history as a curricular leader in our region. But she's taken the lead in working with a number of the assistant superintendents for instruction in the region and thinking about the next steps of the work and planning the next steps that are going to happen. Additionally, I'm among a small group of superintendents that are working throughout the entire Westchester region to identify structures and plans to unify and align the efforts that are happening in our school districts. So when we're, when we're thinking about what's happening on different fronts, we're taking that feedback from other people. The, the surveys that we're referencing, part of it's going to go from our committee work, but Mary is collaborating and organizing common questions with surrounding districts where we could have a pool of, of resources there that we could draw from. On my end with the superintendents, we're looking to create frameworks for common types of experiences where possible to try to align practices and procedures and allow districts' thinking to enrich one another, whether that's for how they're delivering a particular service or how they've overcome certain types of challenges that they may have faced.
Just trying to link up some of the comments here. Yeah, I will, I will note for some of those who may have not attended our meetings in the past, I know some of you have submitted multiple comments somewhat in live stream, and that's going to be difficult for us to link together and put together. So I don't know if some of you who have done that want to formulate your questions or comments into one comment that can be read. Otherwise, I'll probably, will look to read the first and most typically the longest of those comments. So given that and apologies, this is a new format for all of us in terms of using the Q and A portion of Zoom. Typically at our meetings, it's a little easier and more, and more straightforward where everyone gets up to the mic and speaks for their three minutes and then there's a response. It's, it's not a running dialogue to, at our meetings, and that's just, that's not how the meetings are run. So apologies that this format may be a little cumbersome and clunky, but we wanted to give the community an opportunity to make their comments, and this was the vehicle with which to do so. Scott Schmidt, 67 Hamilton Road had a question, is consideration being given to keep students together from this year to next, e.g., keeping all students from kindergarten class together when they go to first grade? This would help ease the transition in the event we have to start next year remotely.
So the, the practice of looping, where a class stays together into the next year, which in sometimes stays with the same teacher, sometimes not, is something that has come up at several meetings in the region and is certainly one model that I expect will come up in discussion with the reopening committee.
Would you like some assistance with this, Brian? I feel bad that you're trying to navigate all this.
No, I think it's the, the only way to, to do it. I'm just, I'm trying to link up, okay. Eric Topel, 32 Park Avenue had a comment. Thank you all for everyone's hard work and dedication. One area where we felt that the curriculum fell short, at least for first and third graders, concerned the amount of time our children spent concerned the amount of time our children spent one-on-one and also in small groups with their teachers over the course of the distant learning. At no time did our children have one-to-one meetings with their respective teachers. Given the size of the classes, there is no reason for our children to not have had such a meeting at least one time per week for a check-in, but also to address any concerns or opportunities for development. Similarly, there is no reason for the teachers to not have had increased opportunities to connect with the children in smaller groups. For example, the teachers could have had sessions in the entire class two times per week, and then in the other three days to meet with the children in smaller groups. Such interaction would have addressed both the children's emotional and intellectual needs.
Again, the question of how many times, how much, and what format is something that we've been getting lots of questions about in various forms, and what people are looking for varies widely. So that will be an absolute top point of conversation as we think about what our next iteration will look like.
Thank you. We have Sarah Parganos, 90 Fargo Lane. I appreciate your point about synchronous and asynchronous learning in and out of the classroom. However, asynchronous learning is really not the same at home and in school. In school, the students can still access their educator for questions regarding what they are learning. Their teacher can prompt them to focus when they lose focus. They don't have this access in the remote learning setting. So just because the task at hand may be the same, the way in which the students learn is very, very different in the two settings. This begs the need for more access to the educators even through asynchronous learning, right? Isn't it pivotal to the assessment learning process for educators to be part of the asynchronous learning process even if they aren't directly reaching, i.e., present in a Google chatroom and showing a film to the group?
Those are all great points, and I think it highlights what David brought up before about the fact that for parents to be monitoring and supporting learning at home is an area that I think we probably have fallen short on in terms of providing communication and supporting. I know that that's been going on for certain families, and I know that principals have reached out in certain cases and done some group talks, but I think that's something that as a district, we're going to need to look at and think about. And again, the question of what the structure looks like is, will be a major point of our conversation moving forward.
We have a question from Jane Wisner, 140 Broadway. How are students given feedback? Are there rubrics? And that was the question, but I think it also may be helpful to talk maybe a little bit about that at the different levels, since there's probably a wide experience there depending on the school.
Absolutely, there's a wide range. Yes, teachers are using rubrics to evaluate student work. Many of the rubrics are ones that were already created, and because they're aligned to our learning goals for students, and some are new. As Dr. Harrison mentioned earlier, assessment is something that we know we need to look at and determine how to manage it. That I will share that that's been a large topic of conversation among the assistant superintendents in the region in terms of how do we assess and get accurate information? Because we want to be sure if we're taking the time, that the information we're getting and that information we're planning on acting on is reliable. Issues of access inequity come into this as well, and it's a struggle that we're all having.
Eugenia Spector, 32 Richmond Hill, had a question, and it was, please go over why Dowslane has less than an hour of in-person instruction per day, and please don't say that it's because of different needs.
And to add, I'm sorry to interrupt you, and then a few down from there, Brian, that I don't think you see. She also follows up with, other schools in our system have in-person learning every day for several hours a day with just as many nuances and scheduling issues, so why leave dazzling children out of the system?
So yes, there are schools that have more. There are also schools that have far less. As Dr. Harrison mentioned in the beginning, there's a wide range of approaches across the district. And one of the things that we're looking at as a region, as we look to reopen in the fall, is to learn from each other and to do the very, very best we can. I think every district is different. Every district needs to meet the needs of its learners. We are doing our very, very best to do that. I know I've said it before, and a lot of the questions are about how much time teachers will have with students, and I guarantee that that is going to be a major, major source of discussion. We know that we need to look at that.
I would also, if I could build upon that, by adding that districts have been in different places with the use of technology. And I say the pedagogy, the instruction or strategies built around using technology, the use of different applications in ways that Irvington teachers haven't been. So when we look back, it's only been a couple of years that we've even had Wi-Fi in our elementary schools, that there has been a major, major delay. When I arrived in Irvington eight years ago, we had a limited technology infrastructure. We had almost no devices in our classrooms. We had spotty Wi-Fi at best on the middle school, high school campus. We are in a situation today where we have evolved. We are leaders on this front, and that the evolution of the work that we have done has been something that I am not shy to say has been impressive. But we have been deliberate at a policy level with board and administration in not pushing technology too hard, too fast at the elementary level. When we think about too much, too little, there was lots of concern and conversation around screen time, and we were being cautious in the rollout and in the increase of use of technology at the elementary level. So in doing so, not only did we not have many devices for use in the elementary schools, did we not have Wi-Fi in our elementary schools until just like two years ago. We've been deliberately slow in implementing it. Thus, our teachers did not have the necessary experience to make this transition as rapidly as many teachers in other districts may have been prepared to do. Additionally, when we want to think about just the structure in which they live, the first weeks of this, Jay Strumhasser and others related to our instructional leaders were coaching our teachers and training them how to use Google Classroom at the elementary level. Our teachers had not used that before, where our secondary teachers were living in that world with the students for the last couple of years. So there's been lots and lots of learning that has to occur here. Had we been in a position where we had devices everywhere, we had Wi-Fi in the schools for the last 10 years, teachers would have been working in a culture that would have embraced different types of technology, different approaches to learning than we currently have here in Irvington. And some of that, in reality, is the facts of what we, in the world in which we live and where we were in the progress that we made, and other things we're not going to be shy about saying we've been deliberate and slow in using, introducing technology at a large scale at the elementary school.
We have a comment from Carrie and Jason Tretin, 8 Arglesley Avenue East. The concern we have is that your distance learning curriculum was put together under quote-unquote extraordinary times, and an initial learning plan was given the end of March, and then the Phase Three plan was given early April. There has not been any modification of that plan in nearly two months. Your agenda and responses have been reactionary and not proactive. There has been no parental feedback as to the students' progress. How can you assure parents that you can make adjustments and pivot quicker as things unfold?
I would start by saying, I think we've outlined some opportunities that we're going to be providing for parent feedback. And I would say that, you know, we've talked about our PAC experiences being alive and well. In particular, I know Dr. Cantor has facilitated parent-level coffees and meetings where there has been feedback that's been received on a regular basis. So I certainly want to acknowledge that. I would, and I don't want to argue the point, but I would think that when we step back and look at the evolution of our work here in Irvington, it hasn't been anything but reactionary. The slow and methodical approach to how we've evolved shows that it has been thoughtful, has been considerate of community, student needs, and importantly, our teachers' needs to be able to be able to support the type of learning that is happening. So when we think about that evolution of the work, it's going to be, continue to be thoughtful. I think Mary has articulated it on so many different levels that there is feedback that is going to be received that is going to inform what we're going to do. There's lots of internal dialogue and planning that's already begun in a formal way with our teachers, and then we'll be beginning in a formal way through our reopening planning process. And we are going to look to continue to evolve. Everything has been thoughtful. Everything has been very deliberate. But we've done so within an environment where we've been surrounded with emergencies, where we've been responding to the conditions, as I said earlier, where we're thinking about we're going to be closed for two weeks, then thinking that it was going to be in two-week cycles, and all of a sudden, here we are talking about a number of months. So we've been evolving within the world in which we've been dealt. But at the same time, I would say that I think it has been thoughtful. We've received lots of feedback that it has been thoughtful. There's been a logical progression to the work. We're hearing that people want more. We're not arguing with that point, but what we're going to do, we're just not going to react and throw more at it and see how it works. We are going to take feedback. We're going to plan. We're going to roll out what that next phase may look like based upon what is needed, what is desired, what we're capable of delivering well.
Thank you. I'm just scrolling through the comments to see if I've just got in a comment, read one of, one comment from everyone who had commented. Sorry, it's a little cumbersome in this format. Okay, so I think I've now touched on at least a comment from everyone, and since most of these comments did not use the allotted three minutes that people normally have, I don't know if it's because I speak quickly or just when you're speaking, you don't see the time, but we'll take a few additional follow-up comments. So if people have follow-up comments at this point, they can post them at this point. So we have a follow-up comment from Greg and Amy Floyd, again, 9 Manor Pond Lane. What was the genesis of the Friday Curriculum Guided Choice Board at Dowslane? It is hard to believe that we are expecting elementary-age kids to drive their own learning on Fridays and then report back to their teachers. I think we all agree that there is some slippage already from the kids not being able to physically be in school with their teachers, so why are we employing this strategy on Fridays?
So I will say that a guided choice board is not expecting elementary kids to drive their own learning. It's expecting them to use the resources that have been made available to them and to apply the teaching that has happened earlier. Looking for children to become more and more independent is something that educators have been talking about for decades and moving away from an environment where learning only occurs under the direct guidance of a teacher. The Friday choice boards are changed every week. They're very carefully constructed to build off the work that has happened during the week. As we said before, the Fridays are used for extra help. They're used for teacher meeting and planning time. And the question again about more time with, more time with teachers is the very, very first thing that will be addressed in our committee.
I think it's also important to note there, if I can add.
Absolutely.
I might, you know, the idea that like, you know, maybe this could be something that becomes more systemic if it's not already, right? I heard so much, I'm not sure which is, which is or which isn't, but you know, the idea that on Friday, you know, because I think what Greg and Amy are asking is, you know, the idea that, okay, my kid's here, you know, and he or she's on their own, but they're not really on their own, right? And like, so there's two things. One, I want to recap again, like the idea that we bring parents into the fold for what the expectation is to be a parent during this kind of situation, but also to ensure and remind the parents and the kids that all you have to do, and I've had to do this myself many, many times, and that, you know, and my child teacher's been remarkable in getting back, but just the idea, so maybe we could formalize sort of like that idea of an office hours situation on more than one day, so that like, and we make it into the routine where the kid doesn't feel like the kid is alone, because there is an enormous amount of anxiety as we recognize the social and emotional part of this, you know, just sort of making that idea of, I'm not alone. You know, whatever the way we do that, I think is hugely important to a lot of the comments there.
Thank you, David.
So we have another comment. This is Stephanie Fonseca, 25 Idler Lane. Thank you for your time and efforts, especially during this trying time. I wanted to ask if the administration and/or the board have considered starting school in August and closing in mid-November.
I'll answer no. It hasn't been a discussion. You know, I think in lots of ways, it'll be premature from a readiness perspective. We do have calendar constraints and guidance that we have to work with to meet New York State standards. We also have contracts that we obligated to follow with our employee groups, and we would have to renegotiate all of our contracts. So I think that if there's opportunities to be creative and flexible with calendar, we will look to try to achieve that. But unfortunately, a lot of the flexibility that we have is being hindered by executive orders and state laws. And, you know, the, it's, New York is one of the few places that the hours of instruction by weeks and months and days and all these different counts that are there are spelled out in such a finite way that there would need to be significant relief from commissioners' regulations from the State Education Department and a variety of different components of law that are tied directly to state aid.
Thank you.
Did you say something quickly?
Sure. Who was that?
It's Beth Proff.
But.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out something I think we're all aware of. You know, we all have to look at these through our lenses. Some of us are parents, some of us are in public education, some of us come from different backgrounds. And I know that a question like that can come from people being very aware of different reopening questions that are being asked in private school or collegiate contexts, and those don't always apply to the New York public school K through 12 context. And, you know, it's not my place to provide like a primer on that at this point, and I really appreciate Dr. Harrison trying to explain many of those limitations. And I think, you know, as we continue to have this conversation, perhaps we can be more helpful about explaining things like that, also acronyms that come up from time to time. It's not, tonight's not the night to do it, but I do see that. But I do see that that's where a question like that can come from, from people who are trying to educate themselves on some reopening discussions that have been had in different contexts, contexts. So I just wanted to raise that, thank you.
Thank you. So I don't, I haven't seen any new comments in the last several minutes. So I think at this point, we'll circle back to the trustees, especially those who did not ask questions previously to see if they have any further questions at this point. But for those who are still in attendance, I will give you another couple of minutes. If you have any follow-up questions that you want to formulate that we can then address. But we're going to move back now to questions from the trustees. So Marie, I can't remember if you had a question the first time around or if we skipped you.
No, I did not, we skipped me. I just want to make it clear that while the public portion of our meeting regarding this presentation might be over, that questions are always welcomed or comments are always welcome, so people can always still email us.
Thank you. Michael, I know you yielded your time initially, so I don't know if you have anything further at this time.
Yeah, just to quickly. And, you know, by listening, I actually got the answers to one or two of the questions I would have asked. So it worked out just fine, thank you. Chris and Mary, thank you for the presentation. Yeah, I think it's great and important to reiterate that this has been in emergency circumstances and not necessarily, we try and be very strategic in this process has not allowed us to be initially strategic, trying to make sure we had food for families and that people were safe was, you know, took up the first week or two. Like you said, Chris, that the governor's executive orders were given us two weeks and two weeks and two weeks. So it's hard to think that, that you're making plans for three months out. So I appreciate the work that has happened, that there have been the different phases. You know, I think we all, I'm hearing from you, I'm hearing from our different community members that, you know, there is this desire to evolve what we're doing with distance learning. I think we recognize it's going to be part of our next year in some fashion. I appreciate that going forward, that there will be these stakeholder, you know, committees with faculty and community members and administrators looking at reopening. I appreciate that you shared, Mary and Chris, with the fact that you were involved on a regional level. When I first got involved, that was one of my big concerns with our district is that we were too inward looking. That we had to solve everything on our own and not realize that we were connected and that all these districts are so many are like us and have the same issues and same questions and that we can look at them together. So I appreciate that. And I appreciate that the survey that you'll do, maybe you can clarify this for me, but I think I heard you say that the survey will come out of those committees so that it's reflective of some of the discussion that's happening there rather than just being an administrative developed survey, is that correct? Okay, thank you. That's a yes.
Yes, that's a yes.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Sorry, I was nodding.
I figured I acknowledged your yes, who aren't looking at the screen. So thank you. And then I just appreciate all the comments and questions related to elementary learning. And certainly that's been a focus and concern for those community members. From the secondary level, I've, you know, had a chance to hear from a bunch of students or families. And, you know, I've heard universally just how much students appreciate the work and the challenge that faculty face and that all families are facing. And again, that this, you know, was happening in an emergency setting. And whether the students would be described, self-described or, or, or seen as high achievers or ones who are facing challenging times academically. I think the universal that I've heard that I want to share, and I won't be on probably the committee that shares this kind of thought, is the idea of motivation. One of the questions that we're having, that the students have shared almost universally is the idea of how to stay connected. And when you're in school, you have clubs, you have arts, you have athletics, you have all these things that tie kids in ways, if it's, you know, if it's not, if they don't have across the board, you know, love for each class that they have. And that's something that's kind of missing. I know there's some attempt to it, but I just want to throw that in there in terms of the discussion about secondary and looking at next year and what 2.0 or 4.0 looks like is, is how do we keep kids connected and motivated? I think there's some degree of that in the question about elementary, but I think it's really important for the secondary. So I'll leave you with that, and I thank you for everyone who's participating.
Thank you. Anything else from the trustees at this point? We did get one final question from, go ahead.
I couldn't figure out the mute thing. You know, I'd be remiss if I didn't, as both a parent and an educator, just take the opportunity publicly with, with all of the, you know, negative stuff that we're seeing. And, you know, again, thank you for building principles, sending those emails out, just connecting and, you know, trying to open a meaningful door to folks to engage in these conversations. I think a couple of things, you know, one, we have real opportunity here, you know. Someone wrote one of the comments, it's an opportunity to lead. And it just made me think about, you know, we could really concentrate on how difficult this is and how, you know, trying it is and all the above, and it's all true. But there's the flip side to the fact that there's a lot of opportunity here for, you know, students to do things and learn in different ways and teachers to lead them in different ways and to take risks that they were, you know, maybe are unable to take before. Or, and so I just encourage us all around the education front to take the opportunities that we, that we might not see otherwise. You know, starting with the current events and really thinking about how we can challenge kids to grow in this difficult time. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. So we did have, I think, as I was saying, one final question from the community from Rob and Lisa Davis, seven Gray Rock terrorists. Our lesson plans usually come out shortly after 7:00 AM. Parents can be balancing multiple children, responsibilities for getting the school day started, as well as their own professional responsibilities. On top of this, parents may need to learn any material we need to teach. Can it be considered that we are given lesson material ahead of times that parents can prepare anything they need to do to help teach as opposed to having to do so during what essentially becomes the last possible minutes?
So that's an interesting question, and I would encourage Mr. and Mrs. Davis to reach out to the building principal and talk about if, if that's an adjustment that can be made.
Thank you. And, you know, one of the things I do want to point out, you know, we spent time tonight discussing a lot of issues. But, you know, ordinarily, and even in these extraordinary times, there's, you know, parents should be reaching out directly to either their teachers, the building principals, or the PAC process for questions, since that's typically the first entry point to try to resolve an issue or question, whether it be distance learning based or otherwise. So, you know, we appreciate the community engagement this evening and the questions. And I know many of you have probably already engaged with various people who are involved in your children's education. But I just did want to remind everyone, suppose those who may not be familiar of the process and the opportunities that exist for you to have more direct access. So with that, Dr. Harrison and Ms. Ellis, thank you very much for the presentation this evening and leading this discussion. It's certainly not the end of the discussion, but I think really the beginning as we transition to what distance learning may look like next year, given that we are, you know, less than, with less than two weeks to go in the current school year. And we look forward to continuing the dialogue with you and hearing from others in the community as they reflect on distance learning. So we can strive to develop 2.0 that is better than 1.1, 1.2, and 1.3. Excuse me. So with that, we'll now move on to our consent agenda for the evening. And before we go to the consent agenda, are there any questions from the trustees? Hearing none.
Brian?
Yes.
Could you just explain 11.1, since these are different times with our elections coming up? And what 11.1 actually means?
I'll ask Dr. Harrison.
Oh, yes, Dr. Harrison, that actually would be more appropriate.
I would tell you, when we talk about all the different processes and, and we're kind of figuring this out as, as realistically as, as we move through the process day by day. And there are many areas, again, where we do not have actual guidance from the governor's office on the executive orders. So we're working with our attorneys to navigate the requirements. So traditionally for a school election, as you know, there's always an opportunity for folks to apply for an absentee ballot. But the vast majority of our voters come to the polling site. They check in with the election inspectors. And then they go and cast their ballots at the end of the evening. The election chairperson announces the polls are closed and then works with the election inspectors to tabulate all the results from the machines as well as the absentee ballots. However, this year, school districts across the state are in a bit of a state of emergency in navigating this process. Not only were our timelines crunched and having very little time to plan and having very little guidance, we're actually in a position where we're going to have a new process, one that is mapping out, following various sets of guidance that we've received from our attorneys and other organizations to actually have to count all of the ballots on the evening of the election. So in doing so, we have employees and other volunteers that we're appointing. We have a posting that was on, that we put on the website. And folks that are legitimately going to sit there and count the ballots to tally the overall votes. Mr. Smith will serve as our chairperson, as he has in some of the prior years. And will work with Pauline and overseeing the whole entire process. Law guidance that we have permits us to be able to appoint our entire class of employees, recognizing that you could schedule, you know, Maria Kashkin to come in as an employee to be able to actually count the ballots. But then Maria could end up being sick or, and not be able to report. So the recommendation was you can appoint an entire class. We'll have a number of our clerical staff members. We've also, we'll have our district clerk, Pauline Davies. Evan Gross, our treasurer, will participate. And then some other volunteers who responded to the post that I put on the website. So those folks will actually count the ballots that night and will work with Brian and Pauline to come up with the total, totals from all the votes and report them to the board and the school community. I would also add that oftentimes, when you look at, when you enter the room to vote, the auditorium at Main Street School, there's a lot of familiar faces. But this year, because of circumstances, many of those folks have elected not to return to participate this year just because of environmental concerns. So that normal pool of experienced folks that we have is not able to work this year. And we hope we'll be in a normal environment next year and they'll be able to join us once again.
And Brian, I had a question as well.
Go ahead.
So we have a, you know, significant approval in the consent agenda related to transportation. I was wondering if we could speak to that as well, explaining that publicly.
Before we get to that, can we just finish? I just had a follow-up question regarding the elections and the process that you just described, Chris. What's the process for that evening in terms of certifying the results and stuff?
So we're going to schedule a Board of Education meeting that will be at the close of the actual vote that evening. And I'm looking at our agenda at the close of the canvassing of ballots. I'm going to anticipate that that is going to be approximately 9:30-ish PM. We have about 15 people coming into work to count the ballots. And we've outlined, and Carol and Pauline have outlined, a very efficient, thorough process, which you can imagine has layers and layers of double checking built into it. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to complete the process by approximately nine o'clock. Like a traditional annual meeting night, we would have the board gather. Rather than being at Main Street School, we're going to host it here at Dow's Lane because we needed the security of the box here at the school. We also needed to be close to our immediate resources because the burden is really on, on people rather than the machines. So we'll be here at Dow's Lane anticipating ballpark at nine o'clock to be able to announce the, the results, which the board would accept. By law, the board must accept them within, or, let's say, accept the, the results within a 24-hour window. But our tradition here in Irvington has been to do it that night, and we're optimistic we'll be able to achieve that goal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there a further question?
Yeah, I had the question around the transportation-related item.
I'm not sure what we can discuss publicly, since it's a resolution of a potential claim. So I'm just not sure how much of it we can, we can discuss in a, in a, in a public setting.
I would also add that Irvington is a part of a transportation consortium. And it is a settlement agreement that is not just related to Irvington, but to the other districts within the Quad Villages. Until such time that all parties agree to terms of the agreement, it, it is not a final settlement, shall I say. So at this point in time, you know, I would certainly err on the side of caution, ensuring that it's all resolved by all parties and that, that this agreement is finalized. But I think we want to be clear with the community that we certainly are, are not going to shy from being able to discuss the settlements as, as appropriate, once duly executed.
All right, so I would just say it's a significant decision we're approving. And please stay tuned if you're interested in the public.
Any further questions? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just to note, Moore is having some technical difficulties. She's back. We just voted, but Moore was not part of it.
Sorry about that. My power went out.
So we can have you listed as abstention? Or would you like to vote in, in favor of the consent?
I can, I wasn't meaning to abstain, so just consider me a vote in favor, please. Thank you.
So our next meeting will be, excuse me, on Tuesday, June 16th will be our next public meeting. But there'll also be a meeting on June 9th to accept the results of the election, as we previously talked about. And now if I can have a motion to adjourn for executive session for the purpose of discussing management, the employment history of particular persons.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.